Good morning. I'm used to saying good evening, everybody. It's eight thirty in the morning. Welcome to Temecula City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, give us a roll call.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Nigard?
And the mayor is here. This is the portion of the meeting where we take public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one public comment, but I believe it could be related to either the business item or a general public comment.
Okay, and who is that?
It's Mr. Morell in regards to pickleball.
Okay, so let's get, I believe you're right, but let's be sure. Mr. Morell, are you here?
Yes.
And a quick question, are you here to talk about the budget and the capital improvement program and recreational, or is it outside of the budget issue?
Uh, no, it's within the budget issue.
Oh, got it.
And it certainly can go beyond that, but I think this meeting...
You got it, so we'll call you up when we take a hearing, comments from speakers. All right. That leaves us to council business. Hold on a second. Where was I? All right. That leaves us to council business and I'm gonna...
Flag salute.
What was that?
Flag salute.
Oh, thank you very much. Mr. Stewart, why don't you go for it?
All right, please rise. Join me in saluting our flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you can be seated. We'll go to item one, council business. Number one, review fiscal years 2020 to 2024 capital improvement program and review final year 2019 to '20 capital improvement program and annual operating budgets for the city of Temecula, the Temecula Community Services District, and the successor agency to Temecula Redevelopment Agency. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to City Manager Erin Adams, and he'll take it from here. Mr. Adams.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I am proud to report that we have balanced the city's budget out five years, fully funded our reserves, and continue to provide the necessary resources today, tomorrow, and in the future to maintain the highest quality of life for this community. The benefits of five-year budget forecasting and modeling are numerous, and they allow the city council to evaluate our business options and make the necessary course corrections. Given there are multiple pieces to our budget, funding sources that in some cases they touch three different budgets, I would like to suggest that we provide the city council the full presentation and then come back for individual questions and discussion. If this is acceptable, I think it will allow the broader and much bigger financial picture to be presented and digested. The agenda for today will include an overview of the five-year capital improvement program, recommendations outlined in the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2019-20, the Temecula Community Services District operating budget, as well as discussion on a five-year strategic plan. But before we introduce the CIP and proposed budget, I wanted to share some current demographics and economic information about the city. As provided by the California Department of Finance and Claritas 360 and the Southwest Riverside County Board of Realty, the following demographics play a significant role in the strength of our local economy and our budget. Our current population is 113,826. This is up 0.5% of an increase from this time last year. The median age in years is 35.3. This is slightly higher than the 35.1 in 2018. And the number of households is 36,001. This is up 1.5% from 2018. The median home price in Temecula in March was listed as 475,000. This is down 3% from March of 2018. And the number of jobs listed and tied to the city of Temecula is 55,700. This is up 1% over the previous year. This does mark the highest job count in the city's history. We continue to remain the job center for Southwest Riverside County. Our March unemployment rate continues to trend in the right direction. Temecula was listed at 3.6%. This was the same level as the prior year. Riverside County, for context, is listed at 4.7%, California at 4.6, and the nation at 3.6. Our average household income is listed as 116,464. This is up 6.2% from 2018. And with over 2.7 million visitors per year to the Temecula Valley region, spending in excess of $724 million has greatly contributed to the economic health of the city. Temecula ranks in the top 8% in retail sales generation across the state. And with public safety our top priority, we remain one of the safest cities in America according to FBI statistics. And Temecula School District ranks first in the county in academic achievement. While Temecula continues to provide an outstanding quality of life as evidenced by these statistics, the local economy is beginning to display signs of a slower pace of growth. While there are no concerning indications of a looming recession, our revenue projections and ensuing budget requests are in line with the slowing and softening economy. Later in today's presentation, we will share a new financial analysis tool that we've created to address potential impacts to future revenue. The proposed operating budget today in CIP has been drafted to be in line with the six core values of the city council adopted Quality of Life Master Plan from 2011, as displayed there on the screen. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Pat Thomas, our Public Works Director, who will walk us through the proposed capital improvement program budget. Pat?
Thank you, Erin, and good morning, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP, is a comprehensive planning document that identifies and prioritizes major capital improvement projects over the next five years. Major capital projects are those in excess of $30,000 in cost and have a long-term lifespan. Projects in this document are reflected in each of the five fiscal years based on community needs, prioritized by the city council, and the availability of funding. Many of these projects in the CIP are funded with one-time revenue sources that are non-recurring. Therefore, it's extremely important that the appropriate level of effort is expended to maximize the efficiency and effectiveness of these one-time dollars. There are a total of 68 projects proposed in the CIP that are categorized as either circulation projects aimed at reducing traffic congestion, infrastructure and public facilities, parks projects, and a placeholder for the available housing funds administered by the SARDA or the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. There are approximately $580 million in total project costs in the CIP. $435 million represents the cost to complete the projects, and $144 million has been previously spent on the listed capital projects. We've identified $334 million in funded CIP projects for the term of the five-year CIP, including the $50 million pending if-grant for the French Valley I-15 project, Phase Two. $31.5 million has been appropriated as new funding in fiscal year 1920, with $87 million that was appropriated in a prior year and will be carried over to the fiscal year 1920 program. There are a total of 12 new projects requested in the CIP this year totaling nearly $16 million. These projects will be discussed in more details in the slides that follow. There are 22 circulation projects totaling $346 million. Some of these major traffic circulation improvements include the Butterfield Stage Road Phase Three Extension Project and the Nicholas Road Extension and Improvements, and both of these projects are associated with the Roarpa Ranch Development Project. The Diaz Road Expansion would expand Diaz Road to four lanes, two lanes in each direction, and the Marietta Creek Bridge at Overland Drive, which is to construct a bridge over Marietta Creek to extend Nicholas to cross the creek, or excuse me, to extend Overland to cross the creek. There's a new project that is added this year to conduct a feasibility study for a low-flow crossing at Cherry Street to be able to connect Diaz Road to Jefferson Avenue at the north end of the city. So we'll be embarking on a feasibility study for that project this year. The French Valley Parkway I-15 Phase Two Project, we're in the process of completing design on that project, and I know a few of you are traveling to Washington, DC next week to meet with USDOT representatives regarding our if-grant application, and I wish you the best on that. The I-15 Congestion Relief Project, there's a total of $600,000 that's been appropriated for that project. The total cost of the one segment that the city is taking the lead on is estimated to be $5 million, and $3 million of that amount is currently unspecified in the program. We are working with our regional partners from the I-15 Task Force to identify the funds for the unspecified amount. And our ongoing pavement rehabilitation projects have an emphasis in the coming year on Paba Road, Rancho California Road from Humboldt Drive to Margarita, Santiago Road from I-15 to Inez, and Avenida Alvarado and Rionito. The Inez Road Improvement Project includes widening Inez Road between Rancho Vista and La Paz. There are also 34 infrastructure projects with a cost of over $61 million. The Bike Lane and Trail Program, which totals $2.3 million, is currently funded with $1.4 million in this fiscal year. And part of the Bike Lane and Trail Program is a separate project created to complete the Temecula Creek South Side Trail at a cost of approximately $800,000. The Information Technology Department has been working with a consultant to install a comprehensive citywide surveillance camera program in city-owned facilities. The total cost of the citywide project is estimated to be $3.5 million. In light of the heavy storm activity this past year, it is prudent to invest in a citywide drainage master plan to strategically manage the city's drainage systems. And the city's financial software system has been in place since 2001, and staff is recommending an upgrade to this system. It's estimated this project will take between 18 and 24 months and cost approximately $1.3 million. With the funding in place for the reconstruction of the Margarita Recreation Center, it's anticipated this project will begin construction in mid-2020 and be completed by the end of calendar year 2021. The former Teen Village Project has been renamed to the CRC renovation with funding scaled down to $5 million. This project includes an allocation of $500,000 this year to begin the design. The city's current general plan document was adopted in 2005. This document is required to be updated, and funding has been appropriated in the FY 21-22 year to begin this process. The housing element, which is one of the required elements of the general plan, will be updated over the next two years utilizing grant funds. The San Grotus Creek Phase Two Margarita Undercrossing is included as a new project this year and funded at $2.4 million. This project will follow the project that was funded last year to extend the San Grotus Creek Trail between Inez Road and Marietta Creek. So we'll be connecting the trail system from Marietta Creek to beyond Margarita and also extending that trail system from Old Town along Marietta Creek up to the northern boundary of the city. And finally, as an economic development incentive, the city agreed to install sidewalks along DLR Drive to help facilitate the construction of the new Lexus dealership. The CIP also includes 11 parks and recreation projects totaling over $15 million. An allocation of $500,000 per year is included to continue to enhance the city's playground equipment at various parks throughout the city. The CIP includes an allocation of $250,000 per year for other park improvements. And after the passage of Measure S, the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library received several improvements, including new paint and furnishings. A new project has been added to the CIP to complete the renovations, including the replacement of the facility's carpeting. To maintain the health and safety requirements, the control system at the Eagle Source Splash Pad is in need of replacement at an estimated cost of $300,000. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Luke Watson, Community Development Director, who will provide details on the SARDA capital improvement budget.
Thanks, Pat. Good morning, everyone. In 2010 and 2011, the former redevelopment agency issued affordable housing bonds, which were refinanced in 2017. As a result of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency in 2012, the remaining $12.8 million in affordable housing bond proceeds were passed to the city for use in the development of affordable housing. In order to utilize these bond proceeds for the specifically intended purpose, which of course is affordable housing, the city is working with three separate affordable housing development teams with the goal to provide a portion of the remaining affordable housing bond proceeds to each project. I'm happy to report the negotiations are making significant progress, and staff is anticipating that a funding agreement for each project will be before the city council for consideration by the end of fiscal year 1920. I will now turn it back over to Erin Adams to complete the CIP portion of the presentation.
The proposed CIP program was presented to the Public Traffic Safety Commission on April 24th and to the Community Service Commission on May 13th. On June 5th, the Planning Commission will review the CIP for consistency with the general plan, and formal adoption of the final CIP budget by the city council is scheduled for Tuesday, June 11th. This time, I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Jennifer Hennessy, who will walk you through an overview of the fiscal year 1920 annual operating budget.
Thanks, Erin. Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm happy to report again this year that the general fund, which serves as the primary operating fund for the city, is structurally balanced with reserves, revenues exceeding expenditures, and reserves are fully funded. Revenue is projected to exceed $80 million this year, which reflects a 0.8% growth rate over the prior year consistent with the slower pace of the economy that we're seeing locally. Expenditures are projected to be $78 million, which is an increase of 3.8% over the prior year, driven primarily by the investment in public safety, which is increasing by $2.5 million or 6%. General fund contributions to other city funds include the $2 million annual debt service payment for the Civic Center, $555,000 payment for the Margarita Rec. Center, an additional $200,000 towards the I-15 Congestion Relief Capital Project, and $442,000 for the installation of sidewalks along DLR Drive. The general fund is projected to end fiscal year 1920 with $26.4 million in fund balance. Policy-level reserves are fully funded at $19.5 million, which represents 25% of the general fund operating budget. After setting aside funds for future general fund commitments, an available fund balance of $6.4 million remains for one-time expenditures. The budget process begins each year in January with the projection of revenue, which serves as the foundation for the development of the operating budget. To begin this process, staff analyzes each major revenue source, reviews economic trends, and adjusts for local anomalies such as new businesses or development projects expected to occur during the fiscal year. In addition, we receive input from a team of consultants for both sales and property tax projections. Revenue is expected to increase just under 1% this year, and the city's largest revenue source is sales tax, which is projected to remain flat this coming year due to a slowdown in the business and industry and automotive sectors of the local economy. Property tax revenue is expected to be 4% higher due to the Proposition 13 inflationary factor and the continued recapture of home values after the Great Recession. Property tax, in lieu of vehicle license fees, is tied to the growth in the city's assessed valuation and is also projected to grow 4%. Franchise fees are received from local utility and cable providers for the use of the public right-of-way. This revenue source is projected to remain flat next year due to a decreasing customer base for cable subscribers, offset by increases in electricity rates. Measure S funds are accounted for in a separate fund for increased transparency, and 5.7% of Measure S is proposed to be transferred to the general fund to cover the costs of public safety. As illustrated in the pie chart, general fund revenue comes from a variety of sources. Sales tax makes up nearly half of the total revenue base at 46%. Property tax contributes 11%. Property tax, in lieu of vehicle license fees, also generates 11%. 4% comes from franchise fees. An additional 4% comes from transient occupancy tax. 5% comes from the licenses and permit fees generated by the building, planning, and land development and fire departments. Measure S is contributing 7% to the total, and 4% is received as reimbursement revenue from the CIP administration as well as from Pachanga for the funding of one sworn officer. General fund operating expenditures for fiscal year 1920 is projected at $78 million. The public safety makes up the majority of the budget and reflects the investment of Measure S funding. The police budget reflects a projected increase of 5.6% and the fire contract includes an increase of 7.2%. Administrative departments reflect a 6.4% increase due primarily to the 3% cost-of-living adjustment that will be provided to employees in accordance with the city's labor agreements. The public works budget is 1.7 above the prior year, and community development reflects a 5.4 increase due to the cost-of-living adjustment as well as higher internal service fund charges. The non-departmental category reflects a reduction of 6.6% as the prior year included a higher contribution to the retiree medical trust to increase the trust-funded status. 58% of the general fund resources are dedicated to public safety with an operating budget of over $45.1 million. Public works, including CIP administration, parks maintenance, and land development makes up 19% of the total budget with a total budget of $14.5 million. CIP admin is fully reimbursed from eligible capital projects and is reflected as general fund revenue. Administration, which includes the city manager's office, emergency services, economic development, finance, human resources, city attorney, city clerk, council, and community support, total 14% of the general fund operating budget. Community development, including planning and building and safety, receives 7% of the general fund with a budget of $5.8 million. I'll now turn the presentation over to Police Chief Lisa McConnell, who will present the police budget for fiscal year 1920.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good morning. As the largest expenditure of the general fund, the police department budget is projected at $34.8 million for the coming year. The budget reflects a 5.6% increase over the prior year and includes a replacement of a motorcycle, the purchase of a new razor vehicle for the homeless outreach team, and the replacement of the commercial enforcement truck. The budget also includes the continued 50% cost-sharing arrangement with Temecula Valley Unified School District to fund five school resource officers. The police department is currently staffed with 112 sworn officers, 17 community service officers, and 17 administrative personnel. And now I'd like to introduce Fire Chief Jody Gray, who will be presenting the fire department budget.
Thank you, Lisa. The fire department budget is projected at $18.9 million, which is offset by the $8.7 million fire tax credit collected via property tax payments. The net impact to the city is $10.2 million, which is a 7.2% increase over the prior year. The budget includes the refurbishing of the floors at Fire Station 84, 92, and 95 and the replacement of the generator at Fire Station 73. As part of last year's budget, the replacement of the city's ladder truck was approved with the costs spread over two fiscal years. It is anticipated that this new apparatus will be received by the end of June 2020. The department has 75 employees and maintains the four-person-engine staffing model. I will turn it back over to Jennifer to finish the operating budget section of the presentation.
Thanks, Jody. The non-safety departments represent the remaining 42% of the general fund with a total budget of $33 million, which is a 1% increase over the prior year. Fiscal year 1920 budget includes the addition of 1.75 authorized positions in the general fund plus the 3% cost-of-living adjustment, partially offset by the reduction in project staffing salaries. And finally, the budget continues the funding for community service support grants at $125,000 per year. Capital outlay expenditures are those that exceed $5,000 and have a useful life of more than three years. Capital outlay requests include the replacement of several fleet vehicles, including five for the public works department, three vehicles for police, two park ranger vehicles for TCSD, and one pool vehicle for the city manager's office. Additional requests include the replacement of technology equipment, copiers, the projection system at the theater, the library's RFID tag station, and the installation of KMA's video exhibit in the chamber lobby displaying the city's history. In line with recent economic trends, Measure S was projected conservatively with a 2% growth rate and is expected to reach $27.7 million in fiscal year 1920. Expenditures have been programmed in accordance with the council's appropriation guidelines, which are summarized in the following slides. The budget reflects an allocation of Measure S funding by appropriation categories including public safety, asset management, capital projects, and general services, which are primarily used to support the Community Services Department. Public safety remains the city's top priority with a $5.8 million investment of Measure S to fund 11 sworn officers, full staffing at Fire Station 95, surveillance camera operations and maintenance cost, and the future replacement of fire vehicles. Investment in asset management ensure the ongoing maintenance and replacement of the city's aging infrastructure, vehicles, facilities, and technology are funded adequately into the future. The allocation to asset management includes $500,000 to each replacement fund, including fleet, technology, and facilities replacement. The street maintenance fund will receive $1.5 million to accumulate resources for the future replacement of the city's road network. A total of $13.1 million or 42% of Measure S is recommended to fund 48 different capital projects this year. The larger projects are listed here. A total of $9 million is allocated to fund TCSD, the library, and the residential streetlights, as well as an increase in the level of service provided by parks maintenance. At the June 11th council meeting, as part of the budget adoption, the council will consider a resolution to increase the city manager's purchasing and settlement authority levels. Purchases over $30,000 currently require council approval. The budget resolution will request this level be increased to $60,000 in order to maximize efficiencies in the procurement process. Similarly, the current settlement authority for personal injury and property damage claims is $7,500 for the city manager. This threshold will be requested to be increased to $25,000. And the budget policies included in the operating budget include signature delegations for both purchasing and settlement authority so that the city manager can delegate his signing authority to the director of public works, community services director, and the risk manager to further allow for timely procurement and settlement contracts. I'll now turn the presentation back over to Erin to discuss staffing levels.
Thank you, Jen. Staffing levels citywide have remained relatively flat since 2012. In recent years, as the general fund has grown, the demands on the city have grown as well. As such, I am recommending the addition of 4.75 full-time equivalent positions in fiscal year 1920, bringing the number of authorized positions to 176.45, which includes the five positions for the city council. In addition, as a result of the annual classification study process as outlined in the city's labor agreements and thoroughly analyzed and recommended by a professional third party, I am recommending the reclassification of six existing positions. Three of these positions are represented, and three are management-level positions. The corresponding salary range will be reflected in the salary schedule provided at the June 11th budget adoption hearing. Even with the recommended positions and previous city council consideration and a 36% increase in the general fund budget, city staffing levels still remain 34 positions below the peak of 2010 authorized positions in 2007, 2008. This fact is certainly not lost on me and is a real testament to the dedicated individuals that make up our existing workforce. It also speaks to how special a place Temecula is that has allowed us to hire and retain top talent in the region over the years with a heart and a commitment to public service here in Temecula. I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish and the organizational excellence we continue to strive towards on a daily basis. I'd like to introduce Erica Russo, our Community Services Superintendent, who is sitting... who is sitting in for the director, Kevin Hawkins, today. She will provide the highlights of the Temecula Community Service District Budget. Erica.
Thank you, Erin. Good morning, Mayor, city council members. Kevin sends his regards. He would have liked to have been here, but he's at his daughter's graduation. As you know, the mission of TCSD is to improve the quality of life for our residents through a complement of facilities, activities, programs, and services, or as we like to call it, creating community through people parks and programs. In fiscal year nineteen twenty, the TCSD annual operating budget, the projected revenue is estimated at twenty-four point four million dollars. The major funding sources include eleven million dollars from TCSD rates and charges, one point eight seven million, which represents the TCSD portion of Measure C funding. As you're aware, the other half goes to the public works, or goes to park maintenance under public works, which is funded through the general fund. Nine million dollars in contributions for Measure S, and two point five million from a combination of recreation fees, contract class user fees, and other revenue sources. Again, this brings the total projected revenues to just over twenty-four point four million dollars. The next slide provides an overview of our expenditures, which are projected at just over twenty-two point six million dollars. The main expenditure categories are twelve point three million to fund our parks and recreation facilities and programs, eight point five million for recycling and refuse hauling, one point eight million for slope maintenance, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand for residential street lighting, one million dollars to operate the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the operation and maintenance costs associated with Harvest and Lake Park, and five thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars for dirt road maintenance services at Leifer Road. A few community services program highlights for fiscal year nineteen twenty include, from Old Town to Ronald Reagan Sports Park, the Fourth of July Parade and Fireworks Show, which always featured great fun in a safe and inclusive environment for the entire family, and will again showcase Temecula's unrivaled patriotic spirit. Christmas time will offer Santa's Electric Light Parade, Santa's House at Penny Pickles Workshop, and ice skating here in Old Town. One of everybody's favorite events, the Special Games, is now in its twelfth year, and it always features an inspirational celebration of our special needs athletes. Southern California's premier car show, the annual Temecula Rod Run, will now be held in May. When we anticipate the warmer weather will bring back the usual crowds, over fifty-five thousand people here in Old Town for this signature event. Also in Old Town, art comes to life in the form of chalk murals, handcrafted jewelry, photography, and more at the annual Art and Street Painting Festival in June. Additionally, the city will proudly pay tribute to our local veterans at the annual patriotic salute to Veterans Day event, featuring the Temecula Valley Symphony on the steps of the Civic Center. Speaking of the symphony, a tribute to heroes Memorial Day observers will also be performed out front by the Temecula Valley Symphony. As a quick reminder, this year's performance will be Saturday, May twenty-fifth, at six thirty PM. The city also continues to collaborate with our wonderful nonprofit friends groups for both the Children's Museum, which is now celebrating its fifteenth anniversary this year, and the Temecula Valley History Museum, as well as the Old Town Temecula Association and Visit Temecula Valley. Would these partnerships help bring residents and visitors these wide-ranging seasonal attractions, which have become synonymous with the great quality of life we enjoy here in Temecula? This year, TCSD staff will continue our focus on providing the highest caliber inclusive programs and services, such as our Global Citizens Viticulture and Horticulture Program, which earned an Award of Excellence from the California Parks and Recreation Society and has actually become a model for other similar programs in the region. Other inclusive services programming, such as supporting kids involving parents or skip, and high hopes, continue to provide valuable support to the community. And with summer approaching, we again look forward to a variety of activities at Eagle Soar Playground and Splash Pad, including the collaborative summer food service program that serves over fifteen hundred healthy lunches to children each year. On September twenty-fifth, the Mary Phillips Senior Center will celebrate its twenty-sixth anniversary. As an outcome of the senior services master plan process, staff-led enrichment and recreation programs abound, and we will continue the Silver Shuttle Program, which provides reliable and quality transportation options for our senior population. Also at the senior center, the intergenerational tech program continues to be a hit. It was founded on the simple premise that young people are a valuable resource for technology, and this very successful intergenerational program pairs teens with seniors to help them learn how to use their personal electronic devices, and it's seen participation up twenty-five percent from the previous year, requiring additional sessions. When not working on an update to the city's oral history project, our cultural arts team continues to showcase a variety of quality offerings through the Old Town Temecula Community Theater, regular series such as Jazz at the Merc, and Art Off the Walls on the first Friday of each month. The history museum looks to rebrand their array of old traditions and new opportunities offerings under a broader brand which will include a focus on arts and culture. As part of this effort, museum has introduced a successful new monthly program, Second Saturdays, which celebrates the history and heritage of the various and diverse cultures which call Temecula home. Another highlight was the overwhelmingly positive reaction to the Around and About Temecula web series, which brings the pages of our recreation and theater brochures to life. Around and About Temecula also received a CPRA Award of Excellence this year for its role as an excellent marketing and communication tool for the residents of Temecula. With over thirteen thousand participants in our contract classes and almost two thousand classes offered for all ages and stages of life, TCSD will continue to offer the highest quality of award-winning sports, recreation, and aquatics programs for our very deserving community. As community ambassadors, our park rangers continue to safeguard the city's parks and open spaces, which include a newly revamped Harvest and Lake fishing program, the renovation of five new playgrounds with several more pending, a growing pickleball community, and a recently approved Adopt a Park program. Also a critical part of TCSD operations, the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library provides excellent library services to nearly fifteen hundred visitors each day with a monthly circulation of approximately fifty thousand items, the highest in Riverside County. In concert with other city staff, public safety, the nonprofit community, faith-based organizations, and regional partners, and as part of our wide-ranging quality-of-life efforts, TCSD will continue to provide homeless outreach program administration and coordination to address the issue of street-level homelessness here in our city. Thanks to a decision made at last year's budget workshop and subsequent council adoption, TCSD is well underway with our community services master plan process. The last community services master plan, which was referred to as the Parks Master Plan, was completed in nineteen ninety-three. This comprehensive and long overdue community services master plan process will cover all TCSD facilities, programs, and services, with the intent of meeting the needs of the community as those needs evolve over the next twenty years. This process will take approximately twelve months, and there will be multiple opportunities for community participation and input, which is a critical part of this process and the main ingredient in the humble excellence that TCSD strives for in everything we do. From community services to community development, I'd like to again turn it over to Community Development Director Luke Watson.
Thank you, Erica. Finally, the proposed successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, otherwise known as SARDA, fiscal year nineteen twenty operational budget includes debt obligations of the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency. The city's redevelopment agency was dissolved by the state in two thousand and twelve, and since then, the city has worked to wind down the remaining SARDA obligations. It is critical to note that the funding source for the repayment of the SARDA obligations is the Riverside County Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund. This fund is made up of property tax receipts collected by the county of Riverside. The city's only responsibility is to administer the SARDA obligations until the term of those obligations expires. The county trust fund proceeds are simply passed through to the city. No general fund dollars are obligated or used to satisfy the SARDA obligations. The State Department of Finance approved the following outstanding obligations for fiscal year nineteen twenty: debt service payments for the former RDA bonds, which total five point six million; one point one million is other DOF approved obligations, including affordable housing obligations; and finally, the Supplemental Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, otherwise known as SERAF, reimbursements of nine hundred thousand dollars, which is the first of what is expected to be annual reimbursements until the reimbursements total the original SERAF amount of five point two million dollars. These funds are to be used solely for the rehabilitation or construction of affordable housing. I will now turn it back over to Erin to discuss next steps.
Formal adoption of the fiscal year nineteen twenty operating budget and CIP will be presented to the city council, as I mentioned, on June eleventh. Per city policy, staff creates a five-year financial forecast of the general fund, Measure S fund, and TCSD each and every year. These long-range forecasts serve as strategic planning tools that help evaluate the city's ability to meet its long-term obligations. Granted, priorities will change over time, yet the five-year modeling has become an invaluable tool for us to utilize to ensure a solid fiscal and stable future is paramount. We are not just concerned about the year in front, but rather those that follow. The primary benefit of long-range planning is to alert decision-makers of trends in time to implement the changes if necessary.
The five-year forecast includes realistic, yet conservative, revenue growth assumptions based on recent trends and known changes on the horizon. Expenditure projections reflect information received from the county related to both police and fire service contracts, fixed staffing levels for all non-safety departments, the maintenance of police staffing ratios to keep pace with population growth, and the four persons per engine fire staffing model. Additionally, any operating expenditures needed to support future programs and facilities that were identified in the CIP are included. With the infusion of Measure S funding, the five-year outlook for the general fund remains fiscally strong with revenues exceeding expenditures, reserves fully funded, and the general fund structurally balanced in all five years. Measure S funds are programmed in accordance with the council's appropriation guidelines. And this table illustrates the rapid shift of funding towards public safety as the cost for police and fire continue to rise over the coming five years. Measure S funding, dedicated to public safety, grows from nineteen percent this next year to fifty-one percent by year five, due to contract escalation and the addition of five sworn officers over the next five years. The ongoing reinvestment into the city's roads, vehicles, facilities, parks, and technology necessary to properly maintain and replace our city's assets are a priority and will be funded between three to three and a half million dollars per year over the next five years. Measure S funds available for capital projects will lessen over time as the operational costs of public safety and TCSD increase. General services include the funds to augment Measure C and program revenues to maintain existing service levels within TCSD, the library, and residential streetlights.
As part of our ongoing financial analysis, we are monitoring several state and county actions that have the potential to impact the city's budget. Two thousand and seventeen State of California Housing Package, this includes fifteen bills designed to increase the supply of housing in California. It is anticipated that the city will be subject to a number of unfunded mandates to meet the proposed housing goals of the state of California. Assembly Bill two one three has been introduced to restore the lost vehicle license fee revenue resulting from the passage of Senate Bill eighty-nine in two thousand and eleven. If this bill passes, the city could recoup the one-time loss of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in vehicle license fee revenue from the Vale Ranch and Red Hawk annexations. The Riverside County Sheriff's Rate Modification. For over a year, the Riverside County Board of Supervisors have indicated that they are considering a change to the sheriff's rate to include certain baseline services that are currently considered mutual aid. With the election of the new sheriff, the board is postponing this decision until the fall. The proposed change to the rate could impact the police budget by two point three million, if implemented as proposed last year. The future relocation of State Fire Station Twelve in Old Town. With the state's proposal to relocate the state-owned fire station in Old Town to outside the city limits, we would need to enter into a legislative solution to have the first right to acquire Station Twelve in lieu of the state's property disposal process. The relocation is expected to take up the six years to complete, allowing us time to fiscally plan for such an acquisition. And finally, as we enter the tenth consecutive year of economic expansion following the Great Recession, we are mindful that a contraction in the economy is likely on the horizon. As mentioned in the introduction of today's presentation, we are seeing leading economic indicators showing signs of reduced growth. To ensure we are adequately prepared, we have created a financial sensitivity model to demonstrate the volatility of our operating budget to fluctuations in the economy. The model focuses on the revenue and expenditures of the three primary operating funds, the general fund, Measure S, and TCSD. It allows us to enter different scenarios and projected fluctuations in revenue and graphically displays the impact on available fund balance. Based on fluctuations in revenue, the model calculates the level of reduction measures necessary to maintain the fiscal solvency over the ensuing five-year period. This chart illustrates the aggregated fund balance, reserves, and available balance as reflected in the proposed budget. The blue bars show the ending fund balance. The gray bars show the twenty-five percent reserve levels, and the green line tracks the funds available after meeting the twenty-five percent reserve requirement. If the green line falls below the red line, then we're utilizing reserve funds to balance out. For illustration purposes, we modeled a five percent reduction in revenue over the next couple of years. The ending fund balance declines to under two million, causing us to dip into reserves as shown in the green line on the chart. This model illustrates the sensitivity to economic shifts, which directly impact city revenues. After identifying the impact, the model then allows us to develop contingency plans to rebalance the funds. In this scenario, the city could withstand a five percent reduction in revenue by deferring contributions to the asset replacement funds and deferring CIP projects to future years when funds become available. This level of reduction would not trigger the need to reduce city services or cut the operating budgets or staffing levels, and the twenty-five percent reserve would remain fully intact. It is through this level of financial analysis and management that the city is poised to remain in a solid fiscal position and be able to respond to a potential downturn in the economy. In closing, I would again just like to reiterate the uniqueness and privilege of the opportunity we have been given to balance out five years, meet our reserve requirements, fund public safety to our desired levels, invest heavily into needed capital projects, invest into proper maintenance of existing assets, and maintain the high quality of life of programs and services our residents have come to expect. We have a great deal to be proud of, and we remain a blessed community on many fronts. It is certainly deserving to express our thanks and gratitude to our citizens who have allowed us to be in this trusted and enviable position to provide this level of delivery of service. To highlight again, the major investments for the coming fiscal year include in excess of fifty million dollars for police, fire, and other public safety services and equipment, a total investment of over twelve million dollars to continue to maintain our city's road network, and over three hundred and thirty-two million dollars has been identified to fund sixty-eight capital improvement projects over the next five years. And with that, I'd like to thank all the department heads and their staff for their efforts in preparing excellent budget submittals. I also want to recognize the members of the budget management team who have dedicated many, many hours over the past several months to complete this year's AOB and CIP binders. My thanks to Jennifer Hennessy, Rudy Graciano, Pascal Brown, and Tricia Hawke. And with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, your staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Adams, thank you for a comprehensive budget preparation. Now is the time for questions of staff. Mr. Stewart, you can go first.
Okay, the bike lane and trail program. I see it's one point four million dollar funded. What do we have in the fiscal year this year that's going to take place this coming year?
I'll allow Luke to add on to this, but we've got several projects actually in the works now. The two that I mentioned on the San Grotus Creek Trail, the one which is funded in this next year for the inner crossing at Margarita, as well as the project that was funded last year to extend that trail to the west to tie into Marietta Creek. So those two projects are in the works. We have the project that is funded for next year, the eight hundred thousand dollar project, is to improve the south side of Temecula Creek to be able to open that up for public access. That's currently being used by the Riverside County Flood Control District as their maintenance road, and we've been in discussions with them about being able to do some improvements to that and be able to open it up for public use. We've also got several bike lane projects, striping on roads, bike lanes that we'll be implementing over the next several months. We received funding through the SB eight twenty-one program to do bike lane striping. I know we're presenting a plan at the Traffic Safety Commission next week to stripe bike lanes on Meadows Parkway. We've got some bike lane striping on Temecula Parkway, and I believe on Margarita that we're also planning to include in that bike lane striping program.
So the trails that we're getting ready to do, are they, what kind of surfaces are they? Are they, because I know there's like, there's two different types. What type are they?
The trails along San Grotus Creek- The trails along San Grotus Creek will be concrete paving, so there will be off-street and hard surface paving. The trail along the south side of Temecula Creek, it's currently a DG trail surface, and we would intend to maintain that type of surface, but have it be improved in some areas so that it would be more usable for public purposes.
Okay.
The one thing I would add to that, and I don't know if you mentioned it, is also the pump track over at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, which is next, will be next to the skate park, which is an asphalt top kind of momentum-style track that you can go around, and it sits right at the center of a number of different trails that are outlined in the trail network.
Is that it? Dr. Ron, anything?
Just one. So we, let's say, we talked earlier this week in some of our public safety meetings on some of the emerging issues that we've been dealing with, particularly with law enforcement, and then, you know, some of the upcoming, which I don't think I could talk about yet, but, but some of the upcoming things that we're going to be tackling, which I think dedicates a lot of additional police resources and time. And so at the end of that meeting, one of the things that was discussed was the idea of having sort of a, I guess, a crime analyst position or something to support not just police department, but also activities with code enforcement as well. And, you know, I know it's an eleventh-hour sort of conversation, but, you know, we kind of caught you, you know, earlier this week, Aaron, and, you know, where are we with, you know, sort of addressing that?
Yeah, I'll jump in and then I'll defer to the chief, but we've discussed the human resources that are needed to support false alarm ordinance that's coming to the council very, very soon from, on the back of the House, as well as we're revisiting our massage ordinance, and that's a policy that will come before city council. So we're confident that with the position and the staffing that are assigned in this current fiscal year budget for the police department, that operationally, we will be able to dedicate that individual to support both of these functions. And Chief, I'll leave it to you to, if you want to go into more detail.
Yeah, we had the discussion because we had asked for an additional projected employee, so that would be a part-time employee working as office assistant that could do our crime analyst-type work. So that's already in the budget, and they will start July first.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Councilmember Swank?
I'm good, I'm solid, thanks.
Councilmember Edwards?
I have a procedural question. We did talk about the fact that the city shares salary expenses for our SROs at the high schools, and because I am an employee of Temecula Valley Unified School District, Madam City Clerk, how, you know, how will I handle that? Will I not be able to vote? Can I pull out a section of the budget? Can I?
Well, today, I believe there's actually no action that's going to be taken. It's only general direction today. Mr. City Manager, do you?
I would concur. Today, and we can, we can talk to the city attorney prior to June eleventh, and if he wants to handle this any differently for formal adoption and consideration, so. But today, we're looking for just general direction and feedback and comments, and then we have, what do we have, about three weeks before bringing this forward.
Anything else? Thank you.
By the way, on that topic, you know, that is a relationship and a good compromising position. We want to continue to have that with the school district and the sharing of SROs, and I know it's appreciated on both ends, so.
Madam City Clerk, can you call our speaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the one and only speaker is Ed Merrell.
Yes, please, to the podium. Good morning to you.
Oh. Thank you very much. It's easy for me to see now. I'm a thirty-year resident here with my wife and I, and we raise our two kids. Seeing what I just saw, it's very evident why we enjoy Temecula so much. I thank you guys for all your efforts that you've put in, because we, as residents, truly reap those benefits. So I'm here to ask for something that's actually so minimal, it's actually almost embarrassing to ask for, in lieu of the conversations we've just been having about the millions of dollars to be spent here and millions of dollars to be spent there. I'm representing our rapidly growing pickleball community. And for those of you that are not familiar with pickleball, I think I can give you a Reader's Digest version as to why it's so popular. It's the one sport that any of you, except Aaron Adams, that I've seen try to play. He's horrible, but everybody else here is capable of playing from day one. So just last week, I invited my doctor to come out and play, and he saw fifteen, twenty senior citizens out there, some of them his patients, that he hadn't been able to get out and do anything, and they're actually out there, not just exercising, but more importantly, socializing. You have to get out and be able to talk to people. And so this is an opportunity. It doesn't mean those people are good. They're not good, but they're out there playing, and they can get good, and it's a type of sport that you can, there's a tremendous amount of very high-level competitive athletes that are playing, so it really serves a very large niche. Currently, right now, since Temecula doesn't have facilities, permanent facilities, I personally go down to Valley Center to play. There's sixty people that are down there playing, most of them retired, active people who still have a lot of life and have the ability to engage in activities and spend money in restaurants and take care of their community, and that's why I feel like it would be good for Temecula to have a permanent presence. There's private industry that are looking, coming in and doing something, but I don't think we want to look at the potential or the projections. I think we should take a look at the most logical next step, and that is, can we do something quickly, affordably, that can at least determine if there's going to be a growing need for this? And we're part of the way there. We're at Margarita, I don't know if it's called Park, Margarita Recreation Center, whatever it is, there's a lot of money allocated to that area there. We currently have, there's two tennis courts there. One of those tennis courts actually has enough room for four pickleball courts. So we have four pickleball courts, and there is at times forty people there, while we're looking at either an empty tennis court or two people playing on the tennis court. And again, I don't, the intent of this is not to take away tennis space, so what we are asking for, just in the immediate needs, is we already have one of the tennis courts permanent, except we have to bring our own nets for pickleball. We're asking for the other tennis court to simply be striped so that if no tennis people are on there, we can bring our own nets, and we can set it up, and we can play. We don't lose a tennis court. We simply gain the ability for additional pickleball players. Now, again, the expense for that, I don't know, you guys probably have to pay prevailing wage, but if we were to do it, it would probably be under five thousand dollars. It's not a huge expense for the benefits that it can bring, and not just immediate, but gives us all an opportunity to see, is that growth really there? Are people enjoying the benefits of having that in their community? So as simple as it sounds, that's all we're asking for. Our neighboring cities are putting in permanent sites, Menifee, Lake Elsinore, Hemet, they all have permanent pickleball facilities. I feel like we are the most comprehensive city offering the best quality of life, and here we're sharing one tennis court. So I would like to request that we at least take the next small step, stripe that additional court. If possible, if the one court that's already been allocated for pickleball, if we could have permanent nets put up so that we are not having, every day that we show up, we bring our own nets, we break them down at the end, and we're glad, happy to do so because we have a local place to play. But how nice would it be to not have to do that? So that's the end of my story here.
Thank you very much for speaking this morning. And council's going to have some discussion in a second, and I certainly made some notes, and I'll bring up some of that topic.
Perfect. Thank you for the opportunity, if I didn't mention that at the beginning.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, any more requests to speak? Because we're rather informal here today, I'm going to inquire of the audiences, are anybody who'd like to speak but didn't put in a speaker slip? Doesn't look like it. So we're going to move on to council discussion. Do my colleagues want to get in the queue? I need to see a little finger or something. Councilmember Swank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say a couple of quick things, just thanks to staff for putting this together. We had, obviously, had budget briefings, and it's been a greater part of the last week or so, flipping through both packets. Pretty impressive, the job that everyone's done. So, you know, obviously, sitting up here, and as a resident, I'm extremely proud of our city for balanced budget, fully funded reserves, and everything we just saw. For me, we see a nice mix of projects. We see some new projects. We see some projects that have been in the CIP for quite a while that are starting to get funded, some of the bike lanes and trails and whatnot. That's exciting for me to see. And then just the maintenance that we're really hitting what we've built over the years, right? You know, we're in that maintenance mode, so to see that is, makes me happy. To Mr. Merrell's comment, we play as a family. We play Sunday afternoons tennis over at the MRC, and I can certainly attest to the pickleball rage. That court is often full. Maybe we could speak to what the plans are, and we've got the MRC coming online, and there's some opportunities there, but there's definitely the pickleball rage going on right now for sure. Other than that, again, just extremely proud of our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Swank. Any my other colleagues? Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Stewart?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo Zach's comments. I mean, it is very impressive, this city, and what it does and how it does it, and so I do appreciate all of you. As far as pickleball is concerned, I've never played it, but from everybody who I know who does is just they're addicted to it. So if there is an opportunity for us to put in pickleball courts, you know, that are wholly, solely dedicated, either at the MRC or Ronald Reagan, I mean, you know, we're getting ready to do some expansions over there, too, so I think we really need to look into and see if there is opportunities, because it is a relatively cheap community service opportunity, so, yeah, I'm definitely in favor of that also.
Great. Anybody on my left? Dr. Ron?
Just real quick, you know, I didn't want it to go unnoticed, the, one of the slides you put up talking about general fund expenditures, non-safety departments, and you're adding one point seven five authorized positions with a three percent cost of living adjustment, and yet, year over year, your budget only went up one percent. That's pretty amazing, and not to besmirch the state or county, but, you know, the costs of law enforcement and fire don't follow those same patterns, and so I got to say, it's pretty remarkable that the city is able to, you know, still maintain, you know, a bit of growth, but a modest increase in the budget. So that's a huge compliment to you all to be able to accomplish that, and, you know, maybe pass it along to the state and county, because they might, you know, they might be interested. So just saying, you know, if you want to pass that along, that'd be great. The other thing, too, is the sensitivity analysis you did this year, that's the first time I think I've seen that, right? Yeah, I mean, that's a huge tool to be able to really project out uncertainty into the future, and I really appreciated doing that, because that, I think, highlights exactly what we tend to talk about, you know, toward the end of these budget hearings, which is, you know, the what-if scenarios and capturing that kind of uncertainty and knowing that we have a plan in place to be able to deal with it that doesn't have a huge impact on, you know, especially the staff side of the House. You know, that's a big deal, so really glad to see that you did that this year. And that was it, just another, you know, outstanding, outstanding job, Ms. Hennessy, and to everybody else that, you know, I haven't, you know, yelled out your name in vain in four years now, so, you know, it's so great, it's fantastic, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, we know we're doing the full-spectrum street lighting LEDs. Can you just give us an idea of the timetable?
Yes, we're very close to having completed the acquisition of the lights from Southern California Edison. That should be done by the end of June, and then we'll start the retrofits to the LEDs. We expect that's going to be three to six months, so by the end of the calendar year, we should have all the lights converted over to LED.
And where are we starting, Pat?
We're starting in the northern portion of the city, so basically, everything north of Rancho California.
Okay.
And then we're kind of, we'll do the middle segment next, and then the southern segment last.
And then my next question is, we're relying on, we're hopeful for RCTC to come through for replacement funds, and what's that look like, Aaron?
Are we talking about French Valley interchange?
Yeah, French Valley.
Yeah, well, Councilman Ron and I will be traveling to DC Saturday. We have a meeting with Department of Transportation on Monday. We have a very large ask in Washington for fifty million dollars for Phase Two of French Valley, which we all desperately want to see happen. We have a little north of fifty million in program funds to match that grant. That's why we're, it's paramount that we're successful in this infra grant. There is one more round of federal grant applications if we are unsuccessful, but we are going down Parallel Pass. We're working with Mayor Nigar and Councilman Ron on the I-15 Task Force with RCTC, because we need a Plan B, C, and D if we're not successful with the grant, and so we're having those conversations with them, because they have access to a lot more different colors of money than the city does, and the mayor may want to speak to this, but he's our representative there on the board, and I'm going to remain hopeful that if the infra grant isn't our, you know, end-all solution here, that we'll be able to work, hopefully, something out with RCTC to close this gap, and that's going to be our charge, but we're going down Two Pass.
Have our partners in the I-15 Task Force, have they, you know, prepared letters, you know, to supporting our approach?
Yeah, everybody, everybody has lent their council, staff, support towards French Valley. We're bringing all of that information with us. We produced a one-minute forty video that I think dramatically illustrates the congestion of I-15 and the frustration that everyone sees every day, so this is real. But again, you know, it's a federal highway, you know, state-maintained asset that the city is attempting to coordinate the funding for this project.
And they ought to be glad we're taking that project, so they don't have to. All I can say is eat your Wheaties before you go.
Done. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you, and I'll just make a few comments, and of course, thank you again for the comprehensive staff report. A couple of things, and I'll move a little backwards because of the question that you asked. I am the city's rep to RCTC, and a lot's been going on. Just to bring everybody up to speed, back when Measure A was passed, and I believe that was in the nineties or early two thousands, right around, when was that, Mr.? Twice, one was, I think, in ninety-six, right? And after that was passed, a lot of the money that was coming through Measure A, Measure A was a, this was a gas tax, and a lot of the money for that got programmed into the Coachella Valley and also into other areas, particularly the ninety-one freeway. And in all honesty, those areas, particularly the ninety-one, really, really needed work. Recently, along with that, billions of dollars have been spent, in particular for HOV lanes for the fast track, that also work on the ninety-one, and they worked pretty well. But what ended up happening is times change and priorities change, and now we've been petitioning RCTC that a lot of what was programmed and a lot of where that money has been going might be better spent in our neck of the woods, in the southern part of the county. And we were able to convince the board at RCTC, who has separated out into a future funding committee, of which I am a member, to start looking at the southern part of the county. The reason for that is... The reason for that is a bit connected to some of what you mentioned in your budget. We are the financial workhorse of this part of the county, and I'd venture to say the majority of the county. There may be some other parts of the county that have a higher population and hence higher budgets, but we provide over 57,000 jobs to the region, and there's approximately, I guess, 80,000 jobs in the area, so, in the Southwest Riverside County area. So you can see there's a disproportionate amount of jobs here. We're a serious economic development generator. We provide over 750 million, and when I say "we," there's a lot of players in that, from Convis, Chamber of Commerce, the Pachangas, what we do in Old Town, the Promenade Mall, Wine Country, there's over $750 million worth of economic development that is occurring. All of that is hard to argue with, and so we're making headway in that regards at RCTC. RCTC is also talking about going out for an extension of the gas tax for Measure A. The truth, and, you know, I know people are tiring of these gas taxes, there's absolutely no doubt about it, but as we sit at RCTC and we go over every single project that truly has a need, there are billions of dollars worth of needs and really no funding sources to take care of it, period. And so you look at it and say, well, what are we going to do? And RCTC is quite divided, and nobody really wants to add an additional tax, because we feel people are taxed, but then what do we do about improving these roads? And it's not just making roads wider, but finding better ways to operate those roads, which leads me to the I-15 Task Force. We convened that over approximately, would you say, a year, year and a half? And we, when we started out, it's a testimony that sometimes you just have to start, Dr. Ron, and just have, and the rest of the council who approved us moving forward with that, you just sort of have to put your boat in the water and hope that it, you know, floats in the right place and you get some traction. We didn't know what kind of traction we would get, but it turned out we got some good traction. We developed a very good relationship with Caltrans, Caltrans had some grant funds, we identified what some of the major problems were on the I-15, and it was very interesting, because at first we didn't believe it, but after they proved it to us, with cellphone data primarily, you know, when you use that mapping software and you allow those location services, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, you're being tracked, and we can tell, we, the people who gather the data, can tell where you're traveling. And so with that, and working with Caltrans, they identified that the, most of the problem here on our I-15 freeway consists of a couple of things. Number one, it's a transition problem, it's a vehicle-moving problem, not necessarily a capacity problem, and they proved that quite well. Something else that we proved is that while many of those trips are coming to Temecula, the majority of those trips are going to Marietta. So there it was, quite frankly, in talking to Marietta's representatives on that I-15 Task Force, they do not want to believe that, but, and I'm not being facetious, they just don't want to accept that fact. And we're still working with them as partners. I do not want to pounce on Marietta, that's not my intent, but Ms. Edwards brought up the French Valley Parkway in our efforts, and as City Manager said, we produced a video, which kind of was a double-edged sword, because we depicted the crisis on the 15 freeway. And it is a crisis when it comes to economic development, when it comes to troop movements, when it comes to job availability, and the data says it's within the top 10 most congested freeways in the United States of America, so we portrayed that. On one hand, we didn't really want to go out and promote that the freeway capacity, you know, really stinks, because it runs in front of Temecula and there's this perception that we're causing all of this traffic. In addition, for the French Valley Parkway, when we did Phase One, looking toward future Phase Two, we actually bought property in Marietta. I believe we bought how many parcels, Mr. City Manager Greg Butler, in which we still own some buildings in the city of Marietta, correct?
I don't know that we own any buildings, we bought a couple of vacant parcels or had them dedicated when they were doing development, particularly when their BMW dealership was acquiring property. But we do still have some remnant parcels that are abutting right-of-way to the freeway interchange that have not been accepted by either Caltrans or the city of Marietta.
And there's still some property right-of-way needed for French Valley Phase Three as well, which we keep it on our radar as well.
Got it, and then the rec building we have over there, the building we're using is, is that in the city boundaries or Marietta boundaries?
Within the city of Temecula.
Okay, but it's on the line, right?
It's right on the line, yes.
Okay, got it, so, long answer, but that's my report on RCTC, there's a lot going on. Now, let's see. I do want to point out something that's important, you know, our theme for this year is love Temecula, and I'll be expounding more on that at the State of the City address on May 30th. But love Temecula is a double entendre. It is because there's so much to love about Temecula and why people come here to live and go to school and play and want to raise their families here. But in you giving this presentation, and particularly as it relates to employees, is why I'm bringing it up, and we could talk about the citizenry and the nonprofits, but I just want to keep it on the budget today. You know, this is a comprehensive budget, a lot of information was given, it's hard to retain all that information, and Dr. Ron pulled a few little nuggets out of there a moment ago, but another nugget is that we're operating with less employees than we had in 2008. Yet our productivity, our ability to give customer service to the community, the community at large, when you look at the programs, well, this is a beautiful annual brochure, but when you look at our community services programs, and Erica referenced that, it's just simply amazing. And love Temecula exists here in City Hall in a fashion that I, and I do a lot of business in many cities, that I just know that many cities strive to be where we're at. So a thank you to our staff, and it trickles down, I believe, not only, I hope so, from the council down to staff, on down into the community, and into our nonprofits and everything else, into our churches, and even the tourists that come to visit us here, I think they experience that love, so I encourage us to stay on that path. Now, my last comment is, from the very beginning, when we incorporated in 1989, there's a lot to work out, obviously, a finance department, a community service department, parks department, road department, public works. And once all that was kind of settled, the city embarked on its first general plan in 1992. So you can see it took a few years just to get around to doing that. But ever since then, the city has been very good on planning, and we've done that with master plans. And over the last decade, the city has enhanced our master planning, and we just don't do it so that we can spend the money and put a plan on the shelf and have it collect dust. What ends up happening with our master plans is that everything subsequent to that plan is visited when we start to embark on projects, when we embark on road projects, community service projects, building projects, everything. All of our employees go to those plans and say, is it consistent with those plans? And so over the last decade, we've done the youth master plan, and when I speak of these plans, it's not as if we just hired a consultant and went around the city and came up with a plan. The community was very much involved in these plans. At times, 100, 200 people would attend, oftentimes, we'd hold several meetings around the entire city. It's entirely with staff, consultant, and citizen participation, so we did the youth master plan, and that was very good. And then we did an augment to that plan, which was the special needs master plan. Then, something that we still refer to today, you opened your budget with it, and that was the quality of life master plan. We still go to that every day in everything that we do, and that was a plan that says, where do we want to be in 2030? And it's funny, because when we did that plan, it was, I think, 2008, circa 2008, so now we are approaching 2020, and we can look back and say, have we achieved that plan? And maybe there's going to be some time in the future, Mr. City Manager, maybe in the next few years, we're going to have to look out and say, where do we want to be in 2050? So put that on your radar screen, but I think all in all, when you look at the plan, you can say, have we been successful? And I think we really have. Oftentimes, when you look at the plan, it takes a while to implement it. So in the youth master plan, at that time, we talked about the bike pump track, okay? So, you know, here we are now, we're able to install it, we talked about more trails. In the youth master plan, we talked about more bikes and trails, and that was the genesis for the biking and hiking master plan, and you can see over the years, we've been implementing that. Why do I bring that all up, and I went a long way around to do it, is that we've embarked on another master plan, and that's our recreation master plan. And I bring it up in particular because of the pickleball question that came up, and we haven't done one since 1993, and we are not the same city we were in 1993. I believe, Erica, fill me in, because I lose count, are we at 43 parks now?
We're at 40, depending on how you count, sometimes you break out a couple of them.
And maybe in 1993, we were, I'm just going to guess, four, three, five, somewhere in that neighborhood, and you can see things have drastically changed, and the needs of the community have drastically changed, and the way parks are being used are drastically changed. I want to thank a former colleague, Jeff Comichero, who had the idea as president of the Community Service District that, you know, we had a lot of playgrounds with outdated equipment that nobody used, and so now, as we continue to replace them, we're doing it in themes. And now people are using a lot of our parks, really neat parks, and coming out and using them, because they are now up to standard, what people expect today. So we're doing this recreation plan, which will inventory and survey and go out to the community and to the council members and to staff, and pretty much everybody in this room will be able to weigh in on what that plan needs to look like. Then Margarita Park was brought up. I think, and I know myself personally, I'm wanting to see, and I'm going to bring in front of the council at some point, probably after the recreation master plan, is I'd love to see Margarita Park become kind of a combo of an emphasis, not exclusively on senior citizens and on special needs. I'd like to see that pickleball courts go in there. I'd like to see, as we build the swimming pool, that both special needs and seniors, and again, not to the exclusivity of anybody in between, but turn Margarita Park into something similar to what we see at Ronald Reagan Park, and I don't necessarily mean sports parks. If you ever take the time to go to Ronald Reagan Park on a spring evening, you will see people playing hockey, people walking, you will see baseball practice, you will see soccer practice, you'll see people in the pool, and you'll see people using the recreation rooms, and you can sit back, the lights come on, and you say to yourself, we did it. We created a park that serves everybody's needs and they come out and use it, and so I'm hoping that Margarita Park turns into something just like that. So I think that is about it for my comments. Again, another budget, I think this is almost my 20th, Mr. City Manager?
No, when you're done.
I will, okay, so this is, I, you know, I know, Ms. Edwards, you've been around for quite a while, is this your 15th or something of that nature, somewhere in that area? And I think this is my 20th, and you get to look back over all of these, all of these meetings, and you have these memories of what we set out to do and what we managed to do, and it's quite reflective, to be honest with you, and I've seen a lot of staff members come and go. My last comment is, is I've worked with a lot of good people, a lot of good police chiefs, a lot of good fire chiefs, and never have I seen a team put together such as this from the top down, all the way down through staff, all the way down to the citizenry, who have made this one of the greatest cities in the state of California, and I'd put it up against any city our size in the United States of America. So with that, I'm finished. Mr. City Manager, you wanted to say something?
Just a couple of things, first off, thank you for the remarks on the staff. We have a lot of folks here today, and we appreciate all of those remarks and recognition. Just a couple of things, with respect to Margarita Rec Center, staff has, you know, excited about bringing on a new facility. We've had a lot of internal conversations about programming, what that's going to be, who lives around there. It's an amazing opportunity to do this right, and we plan to. I think what you described there is what we envision as a, we're calling it an intergenerational facility, where you already have an investment in the splash pad, you have tennis courts, you have hockey rink, you have a building that's going to be taken down and rebuilt, and aquatics is going to be enhanced with a new pool. Intergenerational seems to be what we should, should be our target as we go through a design-build on this project, and that would, you know, then what happens inside that building and in the park, that's TCSD, that's going to be what they're looking forward to, so it's senior programming, it's going to be aquatics program, it's going to be special needs program, it's going to be just your average resident and kid and drop-in, because you've got apartments next door, you know, it's, that's where we do our summer lunch distribution program, so you have a lower-income neighborhoods there, and so it's exciting, I guess is my point. But intergenerational is, you know, and that's what we're hoping, you know, we're all on the same page when this thing continues to roll out, it's going to be good, so that's just one comment. The second one is, and I'm sorry, Mr. Morel left, I think his comments were, he's more disgruntled that I beat him in pickleball, which is why you heard what you did from the podium there. But I think what he's proposing is definitely, it's two-part, it's what more can we do today at Margarita Park? And I think what he's proposing has, is definitely viable in terms of exploring that secondary tennis court and trying to bring more opportunities for the pickleball community, so that's something that we can look at immediately and see if that can be done, and then maybe we can report out on June 11th when we have the budget hearing. The big picture, the more, you know, what else can we do beyond that for the pickleball enthusiast community? I think the master plan you touched on, but also, as we go through a design-build on the MRC, that is a good opportunity to sort of really take that community input and make sure that we're building this thing to serve the interests of our residents, and if that's still an up-and-coming sport, then it should be considered as part of the MRC. So those are just my comments on pickleball.
Thank you, and you reminded me about a couple of things, particularly with Margarita Park. Again, there's a lot of little nuances, but the council, or the city owns a piece of property that's to the south of Margarita Park, that makes a natural connection to it. You know, if we didn't want to get rid of tennis courts, there's your pickleball courts right there. I know Bob muting, is Bob still here? There you are, Bob, he's doing the park and recreation master plan, Bob just make a note of that, so you know. And then, Mr. Stewart, I was a little encouraged by your lack of pickleball knowledge, because I'm in the same boat, so I have an idea, okay? Here comes an idea. Pickleball is played with two-man teams, correct?
It could be singles or doubles.
Okay.
Is it two-man teams?
Okay. Don't go there, Ms. Edwards, okay, please, do you want me to say?
Two-person teams, Mr. Mayor.
Two-person teams, okay, thank you. Why don't we give it a try, all right? Why don't we, okay, you want to team up? I'll team up with Mayor Pro Tem Stewart. Why don't you, and I would be in. Okay, there you go.
Notice I'm always the last one. Notice, and I'm a pretty darn good athlete.
I got Ms. Edwards as a reserve, I don't think I'm going to last too long out there, okay?
Small and fast.
There you go, but maybe even including some staff members, and maybe we have a little tournament, okay? And we need to find, let's just, whether it be in the evening, the evenings are getting a little longer, or, would you just, let's just do it, okay?
Could we play Marietta for I-15 funding?
Do I get to come to this tournament? Am I invited to the tournament?
Yes, you are.
Well, thanks.
We'll put together a team, okay? Oh, yes you are. You put together, we'll put together a team, okay? Go grab somebody and, uh...
We have a female police chief. We have a female fire chief. And we have a female CHP commander. I think we can make a pretty darn good team.
I think you can do it. So I don't know, do we do two-person teams or four-person teams?
We can, we'll figure out a rotation schedule that includes all the council, all the interested staff, and, um, we'll schedule that.
But make it a tournament. Let's, 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 maybe, and we'll have a trophy. If we all like it, we can do it again. We'll pass it around. Stu and I, we can display it at our homes. Okay, the barbershop, okay? If you don't, if you didn't just notice, I just threw out the challenge. Okay, there you go.
Randy, Erica, Jennifer.
Mm-hmm. Let's get geared up, man. Yeah, okay, there we go.
Bring your guns.
And so let's get, let's get a little hyped about that. I think that'd be, uh, excellent. Is, are there any other comments? Any other comments? Uh, staff, any other comments? All right, we've always dreamed big in Temecula. Uh, there's always been Temecula love. Let's keep it that way. This meeting is adjourned.